All those meeting places. Just make it two days to that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Right, and we want to hail the lodge and shade there. My eye, I knew you'd be saying.
I'd be begging, I'd be jashing, Brandon.
This approved minutes of the September 20th, 2016 meeting. Carol made a motion. Brown, he second, is that all he has?
Yeah.
Don't want to sign then, Heather, Mr. Brown. Okay, all right, let's go to our reports. I think since Ray was doing a financial update, why don't we ask Dr. Lowe to go first to his first special education update. Have you?
Good afternoon. I understand that as board members, you become accustomed to how each of us present information to you. Previously, I may have had a few bulleted notes, but I always attempted to engage each of you, so please forgive me for today's scripted presentation. My grandmother's death has been difficult for me, but as a Spanish educator in Canal Jackson and Upshire Counties, I do believe she may lightning strike me on this clear day if I shirked my duty to present to you all. Last summer, the Lincoln County Board of Education hired me to oversee the Department of Special Education for Lincoln County Schools. As I've completed my first year as your director, I would like to brief you on the successes of the department over the past year. In addition to the maintenance and day-to-day running of special education, we have accomplished, and I am most proud of the first item on my list. We built a calming sensory room at West Hamlin Elementary. This is an innovative accommodation, but it's been integral to some of our students' successes. From the support from Mr. Roy, other schools are now wanting a sensory room, and we're in the process of building four more sensory rooms across the county. We have worked with the Applied Behavior Learning Center and Jimmy Jordan to implement the Eden Program as part of ABA therapy. We have trained nearly 200 staff in crisis prevention techniques. We have offered in certified staff in visual phonics and PEX, being Level One certified if they took the classes. We now have a fully certified teacher of the visually impaired and is off permit. In addition, more of our special education teachers at Duval and Guyan Valley Middle between last spring and this fall will finish their practicums and become fully certified. We have created a personal care aid checklist to ensure objectivity and fidelity. We have hired our own occupational therapist, and we project to save at least $35,000 this year alone. We were able to fill our lead psychologist position without a gap with someone who is highly qualified and credentialed. We have recognized our facilitation in placing students on modified diplomas and have been working diligently to close that gap. To offer our students with modified diplomas more in the area of transition, we purchased a pay lab, trained the appropriate staff, and have facilitated that within the schedule of Lincoln County High School. We acquired, cleaned, and now maintain the adaptive equipment that was once in the welding shop. For example, we needed a foyer lift for a student. We were able to go to our storage room, take it to the school, and our OT was able to facilitate the training all within 24 hours of modification of the issue. We have worked with Mr. Matt Miller to bring the ASVAB to the high school in efforts to show growth and encourage our students in CTE programs, all without cost. We have made compliance a priority in all of our IEPs, and all IEPs, over 830 of them, were checked with a compliance checklist created from the Northern County. We maintain collaboration and communication with the West Virginia Department of Education, as well as the West Virginia School for the Deaf and Blind. As one of their administrators at the School for the Deaf and Blind once said, "Your county cares enough to stay involved when your kids, when they come here." We are now fully vested in Special Olympics. We aligned our SAT process with code, and all forms in our form room are now current and compliant. We established an official preschool SAT process with applicable forms, including a demographic FTE form for three-year-olds in order to maximize funding. Five of our speech-language pathologists were trained to give feeding and swallowing therapy, and one SLP was certified to employ VitalStem, negating the need to contract this service. Medicaid went from a part-time position to a supplemental position. We build at 100%, and we maximized our return by looking at our federal versus county funded positions. We came in second only to Cavill in the amount of our Medicaid returns in the past year. We have organized a process for our 504s and conducted a training on 504s to ensure compliance. We brought in nearly a quarter of a million dollars last year in the High Cost High Acuity Grant, and ensured the balancing of my budget due to the Medicaid shortfall. The same grant has been applied for for this year. Administrators and central office staff were sent to the Rights Law Conference in Wheeling, West Virginia. In addition to our parent volunteer trainings, parent IEP trainings were offered at each school. We apply for an assistive technology grant to pay for the FM systems needed for our deaf and hard of hearing students in the county. Three initiatives that were begun last year that are still in process. One is our Drug Endangered Children's Initiative. We want to be proactive in our approach to helping these children learn and grow in a safe and healthy environment. One of our first steps in this task force is the Handle With Care Conference. Handle With Care is a national program that is implemented here by the West Virginia Center for Children's Justice in conjunction with the West Virginia State Police. The key component to this program is helping schools be aware of situations occurring in the homes of these children through a reporting system between the agencies. If a child experiences a traumatic event outside of school, the school is notified before the start of school the next day with only the child's name and the words Handle With Care. No other details about the event are released, thereby keeping the child's privacy intact, but also allowing school personnel to know that the child may need extra attention that day. We are scheduled to attend the Handle With Care Conference in the middle of October. We are also working on auditory processing guidance document. Auditory processing disorder is what Asperger seems to have been about 10 years ago, something that we are seeing in the classroom, and it is affecting children, but often people are wanting to place a different label on the child. I have a task force of psychologists and audiologists and speech-language pathologists to design a document from referral to services to help guide us in the education of these children. And based on the speech bible from Berkeley County Schools, speech-language pathologists and I met this summer to design our own Communication Disorders Handbook. Communication disorders are more than an articulation, and our speech-language pathologists are working as a team to be consistent in our therapy services throughout the county. Personally, I brought positive recognition to Lincoln County Schools through four state presentations. The West Virginia Statewide Technology Conference, the Student Success Summit, the SCREA, and the Council for Exceptional Children. One national presentation and one international presentation coming up in November. The national and international presentations also resulted in a publication. I'm also the co-leader, along with Derek Oldfield, Assistant Principal at Worktown High School, in collecting instructional materials for flood victims through West Virginia EDCHAC, as well as a board member of the West Virginia Council of Administrators for Special Education as the secretary. Do you all have any questions?
Wow.
Basically.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody figure out anything?
I wanted you to explain the sensory rooms to me.
Okay, students with sensory integration disorders and most often autism have problems resetting themselves. Ray has not been. He had no sleep, and he's like, "I can take him out and do, and I'll feel better." We get frustrated, and we walk. We get up and move. We understand those regulations within our own body. Students with sensory integration disorders as well, autism, don't know how to reset themselves. So they go and they go and they go until they have a meltdown. Oftentimes, sometimes the meltdowns are so severe, they end up going home. What the sensory room is designed to do is calm them so that they can then return to class. So our sensory room is set up, and you are always welcome to go over there and look at it every time I'm there, I go in there. But we also have a log book that logs who was with the student, when the meltdown occurred, and what they used in order to get that student back to class. One student in particular was going home on a regular basis due to his meltdowns and has almost ceased to have to go home. It's been a very big game changer for him. So that's kind of in that shell. It's based off the multisensory programs, disabilities room at the West Virginia School for the Deaf and Blind.
What's in it? What do you use to calm them, kill them down?
Well, what's in there is a wide variety of materials, and then you individualize it for each student. So when you go in, in that room in particular, we have draperies around the wall. We have black light, a black light that's able to be turned on, and stars, black light stars that are on top of the ceiling. We have a lane service in one quarter of the room. We have two large beanbag chairs. We also have a rocking chair. We have a CD player that has different types of classical music. Already, the CDs are ready to go with two visual speakers beside of them. They're water speakers that have light that play in top to the music. We also have a projector that can have three different types of slides and different types of music. We have a couple of different black light manipulatives. We also have different fidgets or sensory integration type items, including chewy tubes, tangles, weighted blankets, and just different types of things that some students may use. One specific item, one may use another. It's one of the reasons that we have the documentation law. We replace the consumables, like one child per chewy tube. Don't share the chewy tube, but when they use that, we replace them.
What do you use when you go in there?
I come in, and I sit in a rocking chair, and after about two minutes, I'm all excited, and I go out.
Mr. Atkins in there quite frequently. Didn't you say the staff's working? I may have misunderstood. You're working with 830 IEPs?
Yes, sir.
And increasing them?
They are. They're, we're currently working on our child count, so we'll have an exact number for the 2016-17 school year after October 1st. But last year, we checked nearly 835. About 200 of those are communication disorder-only IEPs, but that's about where we are. Last year, we stayed around 24% of our population being identified as having special needs.
I figured, I missed my math, I was figuring that we're at 23%.
It fluctuates some. Yes, sir.
You guys comment, I've made that a day, our overall, and just decreasing overall, that our special needs population is 10 to 12. It's a real concern.
You say something traumatic happens in a home the day before something is applied at school. Does that apply to all students or just basically?
No, that will apply to all students. One of my taglines that I have said recently in state meetings is, "You didn't give me a box to mark drug-endangered children." And we want to make sure that we are supporting our children that come from these situations before we label them. But that, the SAT process and the 504 process is also under my jurisdiction, so we're comprehensive in the support that we offer for them.
Recently, we had a Medicaid funding. Are you familiar with that? Make sure that we tell you. Is, if you're understanding or acknowledge that that money is federal money? Has there had been, under some question, what I played?
How many, how many, I'm calling, I say, the state of, the channels it's way through the state.
Right, I mean, that's what we said, probably, it's an active retirement fund. We have, now, these IEPs, that was one of the areas that apparently isn't reimbursable any longer?
They are, but they are not. Under Part B, under targeted case management, we can bill under Services A, B, and C, and D. And under Part B talks about the draft and the coordination of the service plan. And in Medicaid, we don't use the words IEP. We have to use the word service plan, or they do not reimburse us for it. Before, we used to fill out what was called an annual treatment plan form for an IEP meeting, in which we marked the days that we notified, the days that we had the meeting, and we got a set amount that we would get for conducting the IEP meeting. Now, when we draft or revise the service plan, we can bill for that, only the minutes in which that we are attending the meeting. So the targeted case, person filling out targeted case management forms for that student can bill for the time that they are all in the meeting revising the service plan, but it's not a set amount. It's based on the number of minutes in which they're in the meeting.
When you have an IEP meeting and the student requires some outside assistance, an occupational therapist, or somebody that maybe you contract with, that person has to be in attendance at the IEP meeting, the annual?
They have to be invited, and if they do not intend, they have to provide a report of what they would have been able to do.
Okay, should they attend?
If able, yes.
Do they bill you for attending?
Yes, they did in the past.
So that's part of it, may not be reimbursable?
Right. When, when we look at reimbursement versus what we were billed for, so, and I'll use occupational therapy for an example, but we now have our own team. So they could bill us for their travel and their time at the meeting. So then, when we would bill for targeted case management for the time that the meeting attended, and that is 15, about $15 per unit, which is 15 minutes, we did not get back in return. If OT and PT both showed up, we would not get back what we had to spend for them to attend the meeting.
Typically, don't they charge you for coming, traveling, all that stuff? But, okay, just wanted to clarify about that. The other thing, I heard you say there that Special Olympics were up and running now. So does that mean this spring we'll participate in the state Special Olympics activity?
Ms. Amanda Booth, who oversees Special Olympics, did take a participant to the state games last summer. It happened about three weeks after our spring games. And one of the things that we're looking at for that is that we have state games, and we have basketball, we have bowling, we have the summer games. And some of the things that they ask us to do, for example, is times for running events. We do not have a track in Lincoln County. So I contacted Ms. Rhonda Kersey a couple of weeks ago and asked her if we could look together on maybe a grant for the county for a track. You know, can we pull in multiple means to try to fund a track for the county because we don't have one? So right now, we're being innovative on how we do the running events for Special Olympics, but it's not, it's not the best case scenario yet, so.
So we do some of it that we're able to, I guess, right?
Yes, we do, we do some that we are able.
Great, great. Okay, anyone have anything else? We sure, issue of our condolences, I'm with the foster grandmother, we understand, and how you feel, and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to ask our treasurer, Mr. Ellis, man in the blue, or dark suit, black suit, whatever.
Said a little khaki shirt.
You never live it down, right?
Well, for the last month, we've been putting together financial statements, and I'm really not sure where to start because there's so much. Those books are full of information we've gathered over the last month, and as my former boss would say, it's just a bunch of confluence and numbers. Nobody wants to hear repeated. So Bertie and I worked on something this morning, because we were changing that up till, I don't know, about 15 minutes before the meeting started.
So are these the?
Yes, that has been changed out three times this morning. I had them in here at nine, I had them in here at 11, and I had them in here by 20, well, before you all sat down. First off, I want to thank you for letting Bertie come back and help me with these, because she's been a great tutor. She is, she's probably better than anybody really realizes. When I started here and I saw what was on her computer, and I started looking, I was like, "Why in the world would anybody do it this way?" And there's a true method to her madness. I mean, it is just, the way she does things, the way she prepares for the financial statements, and the way she prepares that balance sheet. I kept asking her, I said, "Bertie, we really need to start working on this template, you know, the thing we get from the state that produces that book." And she'd say, "Just stay calm, just stay calm." And then, when I finally started inputting the numbers, I was like, "Oh, now I know why you were worried." It just flows. It was just smooth. Things started balancing. We had a few hiccups here and there, but I've truly learned. Like I said, she was a great teacher. She answered all my questions, so I truly appreciate that. She's got a few more days left. I think we're going to use her for the certified list, or maybe the budgets come next spring. But with that being said, I put the financial sheets in front, or the book, which has the, all the financials in it. Then I put two sheets of paper. Now, through, out my time here, we've talked about certain things, and I've tried to make sure that the sheet with the yellow highlight near the bottom had most things that I think you want to hear. Like I said, I don't think you want me to go through those books, because I don't want to do that, and I always hated listening to accountants give speeches. It was just, it was terrible. I've worked for Union Carby, I've done financial things for Union Carby, and I've worked for a small company in Bluefield, and I worked in Logan. One thing that I found out about school finance is that the financial statements are just a bear. They're just more complicated than anything I've ever dealt with. I noticed that whenever they change Gatsby to Gatsby 34, maybe 2007, and they've done nothing but complicate them even more. So for me to sit here and go through that, I don't want to rehash everything. You don't want to hear it. But I think on this sheet that I handed out says Lincoln County Board of Education Annual Financial Notes. That's probably a good place to start. And at the top of that, let me tell you this first. You know, we have three funds. We have Fund 11, which is our general fund. We have a permanent prisoner fund, which is Fund 41. Then we have a special revenue fund, which is Fund 61. Kurt's got money in it. He's got a lot of money. Ricky's got a lot of money in it, and it's money from the state and federal sources. The job that they have is to spend that money, not to conserve it, it's to spend it. If you don't spend it, you lose it. So to examine Fund 61 would not really show you what kind of financial position you're really in, because that job, you know, they got to get rid of that money. Fund 11, our general fund, is money that we have from the sheriff, from our local sources, and from our levy. So we can look at that, kind of get a better feel of how well we're doing. So the top of that sheet talks about the general fund, and like I said, general fund only. There's a comparison between fiscal year '16 and fiscal year '15, '16 to '15. The top of that is revenues and expenditures. And if you go through there, we have all of our revenue listed. The expenses, the sales that we had, sale of assets. We had capital lease proceeds on there. We had to remove those to 61. That was the last thing that we changed. Right before I came in here, we moved that to Fund 61, and it was a wash. There was a revenue that matched that expenditure, so there's no change in the fund balance at all. So you can see that the net change in fund balance is $459,929. And what that means is, we increased our fund balance. Our revenues exceeded our expenditures. So last year, your beginning fund balance was several, the ending fund balance was $17,419. If you add that $459 to it, your ending fund balance on the balance sheet is $477,000. So that's quite a bit better than what you had last year as far as your carryover, your $17,000.
Again, what are you saying the carryover is this year?
Yes, I'm going to get to it. That's what it looks like.
Well, I wanted to see if it was one of those.
No, it's really good. I mean, everybody managed their expenditures very well. One of the things you have to do is you have to carry the OPEB balance that the state makes you show on your financial statements. It's not a real cost, because we're not going to have to pay it. It's really not fair to show that, because it just throws off your unrestricted money that you look at on the balance sheet. So if you add that back in, the cost that isn't real, you have $2.781 million. That's your fund balance with OPEB. Now, you can't say that that's your true fund balance until you take out the money that you can't spend, or you can't take out of that anymore. You've got, that you can't spend, more or less. You've got $14,000 in nonspendables, which is a retirement forfeiture that we can't touch. The excess levy's in there, so you have to take that out. And then you have encumbrances that we had at the end of the year that carry over. So when you take that out, your ending fund balance is $1.7 million. Compared to last year, it was $1.2 million, so you're $540,000 to the good over last year. So when Bertie does the budget in years past, in order to balance the budget for the next fiscal year, she would have to grab some of the money from the current year and put it forward to cover salaries and things of that nature. When you all had your last personnel season, you made cuts. She did not have to use as much going into '17 as she did going into '16 because of those cuts that you made, and it was $400,000 difference. So we had to reduce the fund balance last year by a million dollars, which took it down to $237,000. This year, you're at $1.1 million, because you saved that $400,000 out of the budget. So your carryover, your fund balance, is over a million dollars, which is in a lot better position than what you were in the previous year. But you have to take into account that you, you know, that would normally be the money that you could spend, that you had to use for whatever you needed. But we've already used a lot of that money, and that's why I put this on there. We got, we've already hired five additional teachers. Roughly, that's $300,000, you know, with benefits and everything, it would average out to be about $60,000 per teacher. And we've added a half-time cook and a half-time custodian, so I think that's right. So that equals one service personnel. So that's $38,000. Now, we, I think we talked about this before, but because we knew that the Medicaid funds was not going to be there, we had to move people who were being paid with the Medicaid funds into Fund 11. So that's that cut right there. That was about $266,000. You phone.
Back to our conversations we had. But we can't deal right for those aides that we moved over into county funds.
When I said that we maximize our charge of federal versus county funds, if you are paid 100% out of federal funds, you are not allowed to bill Medicaid for the services that you provide. So we switched out, was it seven aides out of federal funds to county funds and replaced them so that we could bill for their services, which are the biggest return that we get on Medicaid.
So we'll recruit a lot of that money.
Being proactive. Ricky wanted to do that. We switched people from federal funds to county funds in order to be able to bill Medicaid more. Because they changed the Medicaid formula, and I don't fully understand that. I don't, Medicaid's a big beast. I mean, there's a lot to it. And Ricky knows a lot more about it than I do, but they changed that formula, and nobody's getting the revenue. I think Wayne dropped $800,000 from last year, from what I saw. So, you know, and the annual settlement was, annual cost settlement was not that great. So what Ricky did, what she had me do, was switch some stuff around to where we could bill a little bit more, hopefully a lot more. So your fund balance after all those items, to take that into effect, is $577,000. Last year, I, you know, we were at 232. So you're in a lot better position. And what that means, in my opinion, is that people manage their budgets a lot better. You know, I talked to Jeff a couple of months ago, said I was looking through the printout, and I said, "Man, it looks like there's going to be a little bit left over," simply because maintenance had $40,000 left over. You know, transportation might have had a little bit left over, but it added up. So people, we watch the expenses. Of course, I wasn't here, I can't take credit for that, but everybody watches their budget. That's something that I've seen here compared to, you know, my 10 years in Logan, is that everybody knows their budgets. Everybody's responsible for their budgets, and they're trying to maximize the money that they're allowed to spend, because once it's gone, that's it. At Logan, we had, we had a lot more money, and we would just pull money from someplace else to let them keep spending. But you can't do that here, and what that's done is created this sense of ownership with all their grants, with all their funds, with that special project board sheet that we put out. Everybody knows what they have in their budgets to the penny. Something else that I put on here was the long-term debt. We've talked about the QZAVs and the bus leases. I know a lot of them's in here talking about the bus lease one day, but I thought I would list that on there. There's a current balance and annual payment and when they end. We got the QZAV for Lincoln County High School for Hearts, Pre-K Day, and then the bus leases. So, and I had all kinds of notes on here, and I didn't use a single one of them.
You knew those things. Well, yeah. Note for it, you didn't need to note any longer.
Okay, something else I want. Do you have any questions about that?
Okay, now, well, I'm still a little, up here, the 477, I'm trying to see, this is ending balance, okay? Just explain to me now. And we had all these additional expenses that, more teachers, and then we come 577. So what is actually?
577.
Is it the 577, unencumbered?
On the balance sheet, it shows 477, $477,000. But when you look at that, that OPEB's already taken out of all those numbers. There's things that you have to add back into that to show the real, true fund balance, because like I said, OPEB, we're not paying for it. And then you have certain things in that fund balance that you can't spend. It's designated, you know, it's an encumbrance that's carried over to '17. It's the retirement forfeiture that we can't spend. It's, you know, the money and excess levies built into that. We have to take all that back out, and then we have to show you, hey, we've already spent some of it this year. So the real balance was $1.1 million. But because of things we know we've already done in the first three months of the year, we know we've already used some of that balance. So you can't plan on spending all of that, because then you'd be running it in the whole next year.
I understand that part of it. Okay, all right, I think I understand. Okay, anybody have anything else? This 577, we can spend all this spendable.
It is.
But not advisable, but we did.
Exactly. And that leads me into my next thing. We, you all were talking about, before the board meeting, started talking about call service tax, and, you know, that always gets me thinking about an excess levy, or just money you get from the Sheriff's Department. That other sheet that you have only goes up through the end of August, but you can see, I heard worries about tax collections being lower than what was expected because of what happened in Boone County, and I think it might be happening in Wayne County now, from the conversation I had with Jeff. it might be happening in Wayne County now, from the conversation I had with Jeff. I just did this to show you that we are, at the same time last year, we're actually ahead of what we were at this time last year.
You're talking about the county?
For the county. Yeah, state's gonna remain, you know, probably the same. But we had another, one point six million come in in September, and I couldn't show it to you on a Weavis report, because I haven't closed that month yet. The next financial report I show you, I'll show you the tax revenue through the end of September.
But my understanding, July was down, August was about normal, and then September is usually a big month, right?
Well, I don't, I'm not very sure.
That's what I've been told, and that was really.
For this year?
Always.
Oh, okay.
Because you're, you know, you get to your reductions on your, your taxes and all those things to be paid for the first of September and all those things. So September, I've been, understood that that is typically a big month.
Well, what, what I tried to do, whenever I looked at this initially, was look at the same date, and to make sure, you know, we've, we've got an excess levy check and the regular tax check in September, and we also had it at that same, at the same time last year. So I couldn't show it to you on, on that, but as of like the, the twentieth of September this year, we'd collected two point two four eight million, and last year, the same time, it was two point one two million. So it was just a little bit more. Now, that's not saying we're gonna get extra money. You know, till you look at what you budget, you can't tell. Uh, when, when you compare the actual to the budget, you don't know if you're gonna be getting extra money, but our tax collections resemble or a little bit better than what they were last year. Now, I have a theory, and this is just, I've told you if this theory, and maybe I'm crazy, I don't know. But where I came from in Logan, everything's going down. You know, the excess levy's gonna be going down, because people are leaving, coal severance is gone. You know, we're not getting the revenues there from those coal companies that went bankrupt and left. This is probably the only time in the history of the state you can say it's not really a bad time to be a non-cold producing county, because you're not having to get used to finding ways to, to budget, you know, what you had been doing. You know, your expenditures are always high. When you got that money, you're spending it. Well, now, you're used to being right where you're at. You're not having to find a place to, you know, you're, you're not used to spending that money. So you're, you're used to this money coming in, you're not having to worry about a two million dollar shortfall, or, or something of that nature.
In other words, we're used to being poor.
Well, that, that's, I didn't say it that way, because you're not poor. We can see we got, we have money. We just can't, you know, use all we have to build a new school. Yeah, and, and it goes back to everybody knowing their budget. Everybody knows their budget. They have ownership of that budget, and that's a, that's just a wonderful way to do it.
But, you know, but in Lincoln County, there are some coal severance taxes, and those have decreased, and it's anticipated they're gonna decrease more, and, of course, they're not as great, so the decrease is likely, in fact, that's all, but we do have some here that are declining, and that is expected to continue like that.
I have no idea what, what that would be. I don't know how much it would go down, but I, I assume we're gonna have some, and then we, we have to.
We'll watch on.
I, I will watch it for you. Uh, one other thing that I gotta mention, we, we have this five hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars that we can use. You have to anticipate that the state is gonna have a budget cut, and I almost put that on there, and I was just gonna estimate two hundred thousand dollars, so just like that.
What, what would, is it two hundred thousand? Is that a two percent?
That would, that would, well, I think one percent would be from, it depends on which way you look at it. I think that would be about a, a one percent cut.
One percent would be two and about. Last, this past year, one percent for us was a hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars.
One percent was? Well, it's, it's, it's in that neighborhood, so it might be less than that. But it may not come, but it may be more, it may be less.
Well, there's murmuring out there. We're, we're, we're here, you know, the state department.
We, we've talked about it a few times.
But they murmur about two percent. We're, what, four hundred?
Yeah, your, your fund balance, your carryover's gone. But that's a good, healthy carryover compared to what you had last year, and I think for the previous three years, I think in two thousand and eleven, there was a healthy carryover.
Well, it all goes back, I think, to what you said, where some measures were taken last spring to anticipate.
Well, and we're being proactive with Medicaid, and what Ricky wanted us to do, I think, is gonna be something that, um, could help increase that revenue in the future.
So everybody out there, keep your brains working, doing those things, and then we'll hope for the best. What else we have, Mr. Ellis?
Well, I'm finished. There's several questions. I mean, we can go over that book, but we'll miss dinner.
We'll take it home. If I have anything else, Ray, you got it? Thanks, Mr. Ellis.
Well, hopefully I met your expectations and let you know what you wanted to know.
Yeah, after we review those, we'll get started with.
I'll be at the next board meeting.
Just so long as what you've shown us about this little bit of, of excess is correct and accurate, then, then you get the final report.
Well, it, it, it's fair. It's not just a one lump sum. It's hidden in about two hundred places.
I'm just accurate. I'm just accurate.
I'll find it if we have to, yeah. We have to, I'll find it.
Thanks, guys. Okay, that's our last of our presentations. Mr. Atkins has withdrawn. He's, he's here today, so maybe give us back some other time to do that, but he's not gonna do it today. Okay, let's go to the administrative section. Have a motion, please.
So there's.
Mr. Wilkerson and Mr. Baker, and Mr. Mickey.
Item A, school volunteers who on occasion may also serve at Shattuck Runners for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item B, safe travel for following employees. Item C is revised job description for immediate posting for Central Office Director of Curriculum, Assessment, and Technology, which is attached. And I want to point out that we did make a couple revisions since I handed this out to you last Tuesday. Under qualifications, as a, as a new knowledge to hook and deepen the applicant pool, uh, we changed the language with, uh, under number one. It did say minimum of five years of successful classroom teaching experience. We changed that number to reflect three years of successful classroom experience. And we also changed the language under number, number two, where it says minimum of three years administrative experience. It now says a valid West Virginia administrative certificate. So we took out the experience piece. And then under functions and duties, we added two, two new categories. One, uh, this, this person will be responsible for copiers and copier maintenance, and we also included, uh, the responsibility for the U rate for university. So those, those were changes since last week that I wanted you to be aware of.
You want to touch that same, I guess, Mr. Lindell?
Yes.
Would add any, some interest in this position?
There is considerable interest. I thought it'd draw such interest. Item D is an agreement with Jennifer Atkins to provide transportation for a Duval student for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, according to the terms of the agreement which is attached, funded through transportation. Item E, the DU partner person to pass and inform him, perform thirty hours observation midway on entry for first semester. Item F, agreements with the following supervisory aid for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, in accordance with provisions of West Virginia Code eighteen A dash five dash eight.
Okay. You might have any additional questions? It looks like, okay, is that an all yes vote?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to the finance section. Got a motion, please? Fred.
Say.
All righty.
Right. Now, scheduled invoice is totaling four hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars and five cents, um, and all those, the listing is attached, so questions are gonna get up.
And the second item is what you presented us as our annual financial statement, Fred.
Yeah, you don't want me to do that again.
No, no, I, I kinda would.
I'd go by my notes this time.
Now, we're not gonna go there, just to clarify that, but, okay. If anyone has any further questions, I have a call request. Done all yes votes for the finance items.
Yes.
Yes.
Schedule personnel motion, please. Um, Fred made the motion, Rowdy, second to that. Mr. Wilmore?
Item A, employment of substitute service personnel. Item B, legal absence. Item C, resignation to retirement. When we were working on the certified list, we discovered that Eva Clay was not classified in the right category since two thousand fourteen, so we were not corrected that. And, uh, the two, uh, the two custodian positions, we posted with the wrong number of days. We abolished that, and they'll be reposted tomorrow.
We have any questions about the personnel? Okay. While we're, before we vote, do you want to talk about this?
Uh, there's not any changes since last week, because there's a posting out that will not go down until tomorrow.
Okay.
We haven't added any more, and, and we know that's what the rule is.
Okay, so.
Hopefully we don't, but we're spec.
Question, if someone has finished their, uh, when except talent graduated from Marshall, and all they need is their student teaching.
Yes, we have an agreement with Marshall called the teacher in residence.
Okay.
But we have to have a vacant position. Is it, uh, elementary?
Yes, special ed.
Special ed. Okay, if we have a vacant position, they could do, you're talking about second semester?
Uh, no, I guess, yeah, I'd have to think.
Okay, second semester, if we have a vacant position, we, when we posted at least three times, we can put someone in it, and that was the one I talked about where we would pay, uh, sixty-five percent of their salary.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, that, that's a teacher in residence. We have an agreement with, uh, Marshall and with West Virginia State.
Okay, if you needed them now, and they're doing their student teaching, you can't hire them now.
It would probably be too late.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be too late.
But if they're doing student teaching now, they might be forty.
Yeah, they may be forty.
For the second semester.
For the second semester, yeah.
But of course, you know, we have the ones I have alternative certification by. We have some subs in those, and they're continuing to take the assessments, and, uh, if they pass those, then, you know, they would be, be hired, but, uh, we've communicated with them. There's some other, we're getting a lot of interest in this alternative certification. People have four-year degrees, and some of them are going out and taking the basic, the, uh, assessment, uh, that's required for teachers, and, and, and we've communicated this right up front to the people we have in those position sub, and if somebody goes past those tests before you do, and they come apply, we have to hire them, you know, so we're, we're in that process right now, so.
But wasn't this mistalked out here?
It's completely different as teacher resident.
But I mean, my point is, if there's somebody who's, has a special ed certification.
Right.
They could probably get a job here before too long. Maybe not this year, but.
Well, may, maybe some, oh, the second semester.
Well, that's what I mentioned.
If they had those credentials, I think they could get a job. Does that girl live up Ranger?
You know, I don't know exactly where she lives. She's put her application in and.
Okay. I think I know who you're talking about, and, and I called her, and I thought she was finished, because we interviewed her at Marshall Job Fair last year.
I think she's a girlfriend. I'm going with the bus driver.
Uh, I don't, I don't know about that. But there is one girl that.
He's still a master.
From Ranger that, that is doing her student teaching now, that, uh, that we, we thought we interviewed last year, and we called her, actually tried to get her this year, and she's doing her student teaching.
Okay. We better move right along. Are there any questions about any of those things? All right, thanks, Bill. Is that an all yes vote on personnel?
Yes.
Uh, can we step down to the comments concerned? Board members, anything? Well, reluctantly, Mr. Mickey, anything?
Just the one item, uh, like the board with the legal update this afternoon.
Has it been requested?
Executive session.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mickey has asked for a personnel or executive session to discuss legal issues. Got a motion?
I'll move.
You wanna make some motion?
Say.
Say about Mr. Wilkerson, Larry, he's done all yet?
Yes.
Okay.